Good evening. Welcome, everybody. I'll now call the City of Cannon Falls City Council meeting for Tuesday, August the 7th, to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Abidi is absent. Althoff?
Here.
Carpenter?
Here.
Duncan?
Here.
Lindell?
Here.
Mattson?
Here.
And Mayor Robinson?
Here. All, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City Council meeting. And this time, the Chair will take a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ken, second by Bill. Any discussion? Not? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That moves us on to public input this evening. Citizens may speak to issues not on the agenda. Before speaking, please give your name and address for the minutes. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Comments must be pertinent to city business and adhere to data privacy rules. No employee names may be used, and personal attacks will not be tolerated. Come on up, babe.
Good evening. I'm here because I would like...
At the base of the mic?
There we go. Good evening. I'm here because there...I was asked to serve in the Public Works by Cedar Abidi. You're missing the citizen at large, which we know I'm not. And she's not in favor of having me appointed, so that we understand that she apparently has changed her mind. I know she's not here, but she's even gone so far as to say she would vote against it. But I still want to be appointed. And I think that you need another member, because we're having trouble having scheduled meetings, and there's a lot of issues that need to be addressed. So I would like for you to consider to give me that special exemption and make me a member of the Public Works Commission.
And that's something that we're going to continue to work on, and probably, hopefully, by next meeting, we could have that ready to go.
Why is this so hard?
It's pretty simple. I think it needs to be discussed.
Well, that's what we're here for right now, Mayor. Shoot away. What do you need to ask me? I think I'm qualified.
I know you're qualified. I don't have an issue with that.
Okay. What other problem could there be?
Well, we'll have the Public Works Commissions discuss it one more time, and then bring it forward to the council.
They were supposed to have a meeting tonight and didn't, because there's not a quorum, because there's not enough people.
I understand that. We'll take care of that also.
How are you going to take care of it? It's already passed. And there are people...do you understand, Mayor, that...there was a guy, okay? His name is Mr. Smith, and that's actually his name, Ryan Smith. He wanted to put a house up just north of town. So on Friday morning, before 10:00 a.m., he tries to get on the Public Works agenda and can't. And the meeting's on Tuesday. Now, does that make sense? And the reason was is because we don't have enough time, because you hold them an hour before the council meeting. Well, the meeting ended at 10:00 after 6:00, so there was 20 minutes that they could have been discussing this, but he can't get on the agenda. Luckily, he came and he got on before, but nothing was taken care of. The thing's still hanging. There was not going to be another Public Works meeting, to my knowledge, until I pushed for it. And I'm getting tired of pushing. Why don't we get on with it? You must be sick of me by now.
I'll never be sick of you.
Well, you will be, because somewhere along the line, we got to get to it. And that's the only thing I'm really good at, is getting things done.
We'll get it done, babe.
By when?
By next lady council meeting.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Hi. Good evening to all of you.
Evening.
So since I heard this all the time, I'll sign in first. Leroy McCusker, 100 Stout Street West. I made the mistake of the last council meeting. Some of the concerns I had, the things that were on the agenda, that I decided to watch the council meeting on TV. So that pushed the buttons, and I'm back here tonight. I apologize for that. But I thank you for giving my three minutes and listening to my input. My input that I'd like to make tonight is not about me. It's not about my agenda. I just...my input tonight is about what I think is right for Cannon Falls. I have a lot of concern, after watching the last meeting, that employee situation. I was hoping, after we made some changes around here, that a lot of this stuff would balance out, get better. And, of course, the last meeting didn't seem to me that some of the things are getting better. The one thing I will tell you at the last meeting that offended me is that the chief of police was in charge of running the meeting. I think the chief of police has enough things to do that he shouldn't have to be doing that. I also realize we're in a transition right now. If I could make some suggestions tonight, I still feel very strongly about the integrity, about the honesty, and about the work ethic of Dave Maroney. I still feel nervous as heck if we bring somebody in from out of town. I do know that Dave Maroney has worked under the best...one of the best administrators I experienced, and he's also worked under one of the worst that I experienced. And I believe his knowledge and his gift to work with people in government situations is a hell of an asset for Cannon Falls. I also would like to see that...I was really offended when Dave got voted down not to take that on, and I did talk to Dave personally and asked him if he was offended by that. I thought we kind of sent out a message there when we did that, that our local employees and our regular employees are not qualified or good enough to be moved up the ladder. And to me, if you read the League of Minnesota Cities Magazine, the last six months, there's been articles in there about how the local cities are changing their ways of doing things, and they're going in-house with training their own people, because they run too many problems hiring people from outside. The one thing is, I know with Dave Maroney, after working with him all these years, is that he just has a good work ethic. I also know that we are gifted, because the more I worked with her, the more I realized that Samantha does a hell of a job for us, too, on the EDA. I also thought about the fact, too, that if we took Dave Maroney and moved him in as city administrator, I would like to see the council consider about hiring some rookie that can get their certificate. And instead of hiring an EDA person, we just leave that open and let Samantha take care of that, what she can. And we also hire this person in, and then we take and run them through every job we got here. I don't care if it's License Bureau. I don't care if it's Public Works. And have Dave Maroney train this person in every job we got here. If Linnell decides someday to retire, then let's try to get that young person to get involved and train people to do...to step into that kind of stuff. I would like the city to move more in that direction, if at all possible. I would appreciate it if the council would consider making a motion tonight to do...to move on with that. And my thing would be, I see no reason that Dave Maroney couldn't move into this thing within a week. And to me, some of these stuff that you people have to deal with and is being loaded on the council because of this situation right now with personnel issues should be dealt by the city administrator and should be coming to the Personnel Committee with options and with things, instead of the Personnel Committee have to do this work. So if we had a good administrator, and I feel that Dave Maroney is the guy, I feel he would step in and take care of that and put less of a load on the council, so they're just dealing with the issues. So tonight, I just respect Dave Maroney so much that I felt I had to do this and just bring this up. And if I know the council would do something like that, it'd be one of those things I could cross off my bucket list. So thank you tonight. Thanks for listening, and thanks for your service on the council.
Thanks, Leroy. Don't forget your sheet. Anybody else want to address the council under public input?
Good evening. I'm Kyle Paulson from the Chamber of Commerce, and I have two items to talk about tonight. The first is our August 9 Chamber Fun Fest. We have 52 vendors. We are stretching across the bridge with the Good Hugh County Living Well Bike Carnival. They will be doing safety and education, as well as decorating their bikes for a bike parade at 7:30. I also heard today that they received monies to purchase a bike to give away that evening, so there'll be drawings for that. We also have Cannon Falls School of Dance doing two dance performances. They're called the Dragon Dance. That'll be at 6:00 p.m. and 7:00 p.m. Merchants Bank will have their money blower. That will happen for one hour. They did not let me know when, so you need to come and find out. Monsanto is handing out pollinators garden seeds, and so that is for everyone to participate in. And, of course, August is the month of the Knights of Columbus Sweet Corn Feed, and so everyone is welcome to come and get free sweet corn. The other item I would like to speak about tonight is the Chamber's 27th Annual Golf Tournament and Fundraiser. We have it scheduled for Thursday, September 27th, at Gopher Hills Golf Course. It'll be a 12:30 shotgun start. We have entry fees or sponsorships that are $75 per person on a team or individual, $400 whole sponsorship, or a $200 sponsorship, which will get a whole sign, but not a team. So if you have any questions about these items, please give me a call at the Chamber. That number is 263-2289. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Kelly.
Thank you.
May I apologize? There's a couple of things I forgot. I had three calls about Progressive Rail, what's going on in town and with all the tankers and this kind of stuff. And I said, "You should call somebody on the council," but I will pass it on to you guys tonight. The other thing is, I got two calls from people that are wondering if the new auto dealership downtown, which I think is great, if they went through the same procedure that the other one did out of town. And I said, "I don't know, but I'll bring that up to the council tonight." Thank you.
Thanks, Leroy.
Anyone else wishing to address the council under public input this evening? If not, we are moving on to Item 6, which is Resolution 2371, certifying unpaid utility charges to be collected with taxes, and we will be having a public hearing for that. Linnell?
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. The city quarterly holds a public hearing to certify unpaid utility charges that are to be collected with the annual property taxes, and this is the opportunity for anyone to come forward to speak regarding those unpaid utility bills.
Anybody have any discussion before we open up the public hearing? Okay, at this time, we will open up the public hearing for the certification of unpaid utility charges to be collected with taxes for Resolution Number 2371. Is there anybody wishing to address the council under the public hearing for certifying unpaid utility charges to be collected with taxes?
Has the credit card helped at all, Linnell?
We've seen a lot of usage on the city credit card. It doesn't necessarily mean that it's helped with the delinquent accounts, but we have seen a good usage on it overall.
Is there anybody wishing to address the council under unpaid utility charges to be collected with taxes? Is there anyone wishing to address the council for the public hearing under certifying unpaid utility charges to be collected with taxes? Seeing as there are none, the public hearing will close at this time, and the Chair will take a motion to approve Resolution 2371, certifying unpaid utility charges to be collected with taxes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by John, second by Ken. Any discussion? Not? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That moves us on to Item 7 this evening, which is the consent agenda. Items of this area of the agenda may adopt...may be adopted, or they may be removed and placed on the business area of the agenda for discussion purposes before approving. Folks at home, the adjusted correct claims is Item A for the accounting period ending July 31, 2018. Item B are the meeting minutes for the July 17, 2018 city council meeting. Item C is a chain breaker bicycle ride. Item D is a temporary liquor license for St. Pius V Catholic Church for their fall festival. Item E is Resolution 2372, authorizing acceptance of a monetary donation by the Cannon Falls Library Foundation. Item F is Resolution 2373, authorizing acceptance of a monetary donation by Gemini Incorporated. Item G is the service line warranty program letters. Item H is a Cannon Valley Rural Fire Association fire agreement. Item I, final pay request for the Schumacher excavating first English erosion control. Item J is fill paramedic vacancy. Item K, hire unscheduled part-time employee. Item L, application for payment number two for the 2018 street improvement project. And Item E is the MMUA delegate appointment. Are there any items anybody wishes to move from the consent agenda?
I'd like to bring down Item G, service line warranty.
That will become Item 8F. Any other items? If not, the Chair will take a motion to approve the consent agenda, minus Item G, which is becoming Item 8F on council business.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ken, second by Bill. All those in favor?
Aye.
That moves us on to Item 8A, which is to set the budget workshop.
Thank you. The city council, as you know, is tasked with adopting a budget for the city, and we do that on an annual basis. The preliminary budget has to be set by the end of September. So typically, we hold a budget workshop for the council to review the proposed budget that's been put together by the various department heads and go through that in the workshop setting, so that we can bring forth a resolution to be adapted down the road a little bit. So basically, I'd like to set a budget workshop date, and I would suggest, if possible, that we do it on August 21st, either before or after the regularly scheduled counseling, probably after, so that we've got time to review it and not be limited by the meeting that's scheduled. So that's the date that I am throwing out for your consideration.
Does that work for everybody?
That works for me.
Okay. If we got a consensus that we will do the budget workshop on August 21st after the city council meeting. Okay. Moves us on to Item B, which is the Third Street Bridge Rehabilitation Project. And we've got Greg Exerson, our county engineer, here to speak on that.
Yeah, the resolution that you're being asked to consider has to do with the design for the rehabilitation of the Third Street Bridge. As you know, it is a historic structure, and being a historic structure, any modifications to it cannot change what they call character-defining features, and if we want to use federal money for the project. And as it happens, several parts of this bridge, you really can't...you can't really change them to meet the standards, because you'd have to basically take the whole bridge down in order to do it. One example, for instance, is typically a road has to be at least 20 foot wide. Well, the bridge is only 17 feet wide, so you either take the whole bridge down and build it to 20 feet, or you ask for a design exception to build it at 17 feet instead. So there's a total of four different parts of this structure that don't meet standards. One of them is the traffic railing, the railing along the side of the bridge where if a car could hit it. It doesn't meet the current standards. It met the standards back in the day, back in around the beginning of the 1900s. The pedestrian rails are shorter than what they would be built as today. The vertical clearance, now that's one area where we could really meet that if we wanted to, but we put up a...basically, a PVC pipe over the top of the bridge, which is right at eight feet. And the main purpose for it is simply to keep trucks off of it. Now, if it's something the council didn't want to do, we could remove that, and you could meet that standard. But the purpose for doing it is, like I said, to keep trucks off that. All it takes would be somebody to drive a very heavy-loaded truck over that bridge, and it's going to be in the drink. So putting that little PVC pipe up there is a great way to keep the trucks off the road, and I don't know why trucks would need to...if they need to get to the business on the north side, they've got a very short detour on Highway 20 to get there. And the last one is just the bridge load rating factor. If you're going to build a new bridge, you're going to build it so you won't have to put up any weight restrictions on it. If you're going to rehab one, you've got to get within 90% of that. Well, in this particular case, you're only at 43...basically, 43% of that factor, but you would literally have to rebuild the entire bridge if you're going to try to meet those standards. So the state is asking you to pass this resolution, and what it's really saying is that you acknowledge that you have a structure, a project, that's not going to meet all the standards, and it's a hold harmless to the state. The state basically says, "If you can be using state monies, then we need to meet standards," so that everything is the same. And if you want to do something where you're not meeting the standards, then they ask you to pass resolutions such as this. We have to do the same thing at the county level. If I were to have a similar project that wasn't going to meet the standards, I'd have to go to the variance committee and do the exact same thing that they're asking of you. But my recommendation is, unless you want to rebuild the whole bridge, is that you pass this resolution as it's written, and we move forward with getting this thing approved.
Thanks for coming tonight, Greg. So I got one question on the finances. We use grant money to do the plans, and this is all federal dollars that are going to fix this?
Well, good question. Right now, we applied for a grant for the Minnesota Historical Society that paid for this design. Now, what we would like to do is...that grant has been wrapped up, it's been finalized, everything is done on it, which is really good. What we would like to do is, come next spring, we'd try to apply for another grant, which is going to help for the inspection cost for...to hire...we'd like to hire the same firm that did the design of it to come and do the inspection on it as they're doing the project, because these are very specialized type of projects. So we're hoping to get another grant for that. There is federal money for the project. It's probably not enough federal money at this time, but we will be working with the state to see if they can...they can get more federal money, and then we'll be requesting them to use state bonding money for local bridge projects to hopefully come up with the rest of it. I'm hoping that it's not going to cost the city much, if any, but we really don't know at this time. It's...they've got to figure out what they have for federal money, and then we have to apply for another grant. So hopefully, it won't cost much, and we'll get the vast majority of all of it paid with federal or state monies, is what we're hoping for.
Very good.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? If not, Chair will take a motion to approve Resolution 2374, approving bridge traffic railing, pedestrian railing, roadway width, vertical clearance, and load rating factor design exception requests for the proposed rehabilitation of Bridge L 5391 project.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ken, second by Derek. Any other discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That moves on to Item C, County Road 17 discussion. And if you recall, we talked about that about a month or so ago, and Greg was...brought up some information from 2013. I think you have some of that also, Greg.
Yeah, so when you discussed this about a month or so ago, I remembered that we took a look at this back in 12 or 13, at the request, I think, of some of the property owners at the time, a trail into town because of how dangerous it was on 17. So at that time, we took a look at three alignments, one on the north side of 17, one on the south, and one cross-country route, kind of using the common land in Phase 1 of Cannon Bluffs, coming out onto a cul-de-sac. And the thought with that one was maybe use some common land and not have to cross 17, where the north route, we'd have to cross 17 twice. So they're very high-level look at some alignments, very, you know, very preliminary costs as far as what they might...what it might cost to get the work done, not even looking at the design standards yet. You know, we've got to be so far off the road, based on the design speed. We're going to be looking at the speed, or the county's going to be looking at the speed. So more information than anything is why I got it to Linnell. I'm like, "Oh, that's right. We took a look at this a while back. This is the place to start." By all means, is these the only three routes, probably, or exactly where they're going to go? In the right-of-way, behind the right-of-way, we would need easements, so just bear in mind that those, you know, costs are five, six years old. Some of the owners in there may have changed, but that's where that went. I think we discussed it at Public Works, maybe at Council. I don't remember exactly how far it went. And there was, okay, well, who's going to pay for it, and what's the county's plans long-term with 17? So then I think we kind of...it kind of ended there.
Well, I think this discussion, meeting a couple, was to look into the speed limits, first of all, and ask the county to look at reducing the speed maybe from way out there somewhere, you know? Then I saw you brought up this 2013, and I've had residents ask me if this is still a possibility, this plan like you've got. And I'm not opposed to it, but then again, I'm kind of concerned who's paying for it, too.
Yeah, there's some moving pieces. You know, at one time, there was development planned on the north side of 17. How did that factor in? You know, that was going to have a trail as part of it that came back into Evergreen or Village, potentially. You know, what's the status of that? So I think the first step, like you've already talked, is with the county and the speed limit, see where that goes first, and then we can come back and look. But I thought, "Well, there's something that was done. Let's take a look and, you know, at least get it in front of you," because most of you weren't on the council when we looked at this back then.
Jeff, the speed limit portion of it, I mean, does that have to come through a resolution through the city council, correct?
The roadway is the county's, so county would control that aspect of it, and they can't lower it unless the state approves the... lower it unless the state approves the ability to do so based on the speed study. And I'm not sure where that's at. I think they had some of the speed readers, whatever sensors out there, but I don't know. Have you heard any update from them, Greg?
Yeah.
So we're sort of stuck waiting till they get back to us. I would expect, we should hear something probably by October. Would that be realistic, Greg, or?
Could be three weeks, it could be three months.
But I honestly think that this sort of runs parallel to that. Even if the speed's lowered, it's not going to solve, I mean, the shoulders on there are incredibly narrow, especially on the hillside component of it.
Yeah.
And I mean, short of telling everybody to, you know, walk on the opposing side so you can at least see the car that hits you, it's such a dangerous stretch. And I, I don't know if there's money that, you know, council has or the county has, but, you know, I'd strongly encourage both sides to try to find a more permanent solution to separate the pedestrians from the roadway.
Let's start with the speed limits. I mean, they're coming off that hill about 60 miles. Somebody's going to get killed there.
And I remember discussing this back in 13, and, you know, Greg, it's got the three options here, and actually, option C, which was the kind of the cross-country thing to avoid, 17 is clearly the best option if we were to go that route, but as you mentioned, there's new owners back there now. Do they want this kind of thing going through?
Given, given the change in ownership and stuff, I think it really throws more variables into it.
Yeah.
I mean, you still have some significant elevation and some other things to deal with, regardless of the direction you go. It's, you know, we're sort of stuck where we had a developer that essentially developed it as, you know, private streets rather than some of the other stuff that maybe would have played into it had it been under our full control.
So is there anything, we're not, we're not asking to make any decisions here tonight on anything?
No, I mean, I just think we need to keep it on the radar, and once we get the speed study done, I mean, start looking at, you know, down the road, the feasibility of possibly doing that going forward.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hey, that moves us on to item 7D, which is ZEF Energy. Lanell?
Thank you, Mayor. We received a request from ZEF Energy to consider entering into a letter of intent, is that correct? Agreement for a company that is going to be applying for a grant with the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency on installing electric vehicle chargers. And one of the areas identified in this grant is the Highway 52 corridor between the Twin Cities and Rochester. And we do have a representative from that company here, and he can actually speak on this much better than I can.
Thank you very much. My name is Jim Loesleben. I live in Mendota Heights, and I'm a manufacturer's representative for ZEF Energy, and we're a manufacturer of electric charge stations for resident, for, for not, not commercial, but for larger systems. I don't know, do you know much about what's going on with, with the charger business in the U.S.? And you've heard about the Volkswagen having that trouble with over, over charging what they actually could deliver? And there was a settlement made to the U.S. government for $5 billion that went to the feds, and the state divided it up, and Minnesota got 46 or 47 million dollars. And I'm going to walk through that. Actually, 14.73 billion was the assessment. We got 47 million in the state of Minnesota out of that 14.7 billion. And so what the state of Minnesota, Minnesota Pollution Control Agency has said, okay, we want to build electric vehicle charge stations so we have more electricity for more electrical, you know, cars. And so I'm going to go through this list quickly. Except 14.73 billion, 47 million to the U.S. The Minnesota Pollution Control Agency has issued an RFP for 22 stations to be built around Minnesota. And we have a list of that, we'll look at that next. But we have to bid this competitively with whoever else that's out there. And one of the things we wanted to do at ZEF Energy is find partners who want to bid with us at no cost of near part, because we think we have some advantages over the competition if we can get to the Pollution Control Agency and say, hey, here's some people that already want to work with this, with us together as a partner. And the whole purpose of this is to reduce air, make a better, better air, I can't say it, reduce air pollution. This is the first phase of three phases of monies that are going to be dealt out. The bids are due for 22 stations. We have to get our bid in by 8:15, and I thank your young person over here for getting me on this, on this agenda at the last minute, because it's pretty short fuse. So go to the next stage, next page, and you can then see what we're going to be doing. The state of Minnesota has pretty much identified the corridors where these are going to be built, and we have to build 22 of them in that, in that, showing in that diagram. And so what we're looking for again is partners that, so if we win, you will have us being the owner and operator of the system. Now, as far as the court, well, let's go to the next station. And this is what we're looking at, is basically a 50 KW charge station that has two connections. I don't know if you know much about the charge stations, but if you buy an electric car, you get a plug-in charger, and it takes you about 12, 14 hours to charge that battery. This, the next level is a seven, is a 7KW system, and you can charge your car in probably four, three to four hours. This is a 50KW system, which we manufacture, and we can have a charge in, as you can see, 100 miles range in 30 minutes. So the whole design of the system is that we have to build these between 30 and 70 miles apart, so that you can go, in fact, there's another program out there called M2M, where you can drive from Montana to Michigan with enough vehicle stations so that you don't have to stay over. So going to the next page. Why ZEF Energy? We actually have, we are the largest network system in Minnesota. We have a project from Duluth to Twin Cities. And we, we plan to bid this project because, to own and operate the system, because we get 80% of the project paid for from that, from that Volkswagen money. So we have to finance the other 20% ourselves, and then we buy electricity from the local supplier in years, and then we sell energy to the charge stations. And so that's how we get our money back after about seven years. What we're looking for is a non-binding letter of intent that if, if we win, that you will work with us, because one of the things we're concerned about is that, once the, the award is made, and somebody's going to buy 22 charger stations, everybody in the world's going to come out and say, I want to buy, I want to sell you one of those. And since we're going to own and operate the system ourselves, we want to use our own system. So that's, that's the exclusivity that we ask in the letter of intent. As far as monies, this is 100% paid for. So what we're looking for you is, is a partnership. You know your town better than we do. We'll, we may, we'll ask some services from you as helping us find the best location to, to build this station. And there's no cost involved. I've been in sales and marketing all my life, it's the first time I've sold something that you don't have to pay for. Already, it's, but the money's coming from, from the Volkswagen. So the next page is the sample letter of intent, and I think, just go to the bottom of the first, the last paragraph. It is understood that this letter represents good faith intentions of both parties to locate chargers in our community and region, which creates a no-binding obligation on the part of either the scent or ourselves to do this. In other words, it, you can back out for economic or technical reasons from both sides. But the big thing is what we want to do is if we're going to win this, we want to have you being part of it, and then we want to use our own equipment, own and operate the system. So all we're asking for is that sample letter of intent. I think we've got 22 or 23 of them now from, from cities and co-ops and munis. So that's basically the project that we're looking for, the letter of intent. Questions?
So did you choose Cannon Falls because of our proximity between the cities in Rochester?
Yeah. You're the last major city before we get into the seven-county metro area, and we can't build any in the seven-county metro area. And so what we have, what we think will happen is that this is probably a good chance that we, no promises, but this, we think this is a good chance for us to be a little bit better than the rest of it, because we're picking some pretty good locations. And, and we think Cannon Falls is a good one, because a lot of people would say, well, I want to get charged up before I go, go into the city and have to run around the city and get, get energy.
Why, why don't they allow you to build in the seven county?
There's, there's a lot of systems already in the seven county area. They don't want to saturate that anymore, any, to a larger event.
Are we the only city you've talked to about this in the Highway 52 corridor?
I got to apologize, I got to, I got.
Oh, sorry. Is Cannon Falls the only city in the Highway 52 corridor that you're looking at?
See, I'm sorry.
Have you looked at any other cities on Highway 52?
Yeah.
To have this? Or just Cannon Falls?
No, this is all new for the whole, for that whole corridor.
Okay.
There's none of them right now.
Now, have you talked to any other cities about doing this only 52 corridor?
Yeah, I've talked to Rochester, Albert Lee, St. Charles, where else? That's about it on this corridor. We have to, we, they told us two points, and we got to find three more. If you look at the drawing, you see some names. On the fifth, on, on A, which is corridor A, from Bloomington to Albert Lee to Rochester to Drugsbuck, which is the station of information for the state of Minnesota. So in that location, we have to come up with five systems, and they have to be 30, 30 to 70 miles apart.
So you're just looking to space them approximately 30 to 70 miles apart?
Yep.
Which would make sense as to why they're picking Cannon Falls.
If you were to get the bid, would you, then you would work with us to determine the best site in, in the Cannon Falls area?
Yes.
While in the city, because that's all we can do.
And trying to think ahead, because this is a pretty attractive offering, and, and the places where we want to reside them is places where they can stop and spend an hour maybe. So it's kind of like Casey's or someplace like that. If we go ahead and pick this on our own, somebody else is going to come to you and maybe and say, well, why didn't I get a chance? So we want you to be part of our, part of our decision-making process so that everybody's happy about this.
Joe Robbie, if I could just say something. We got that old lot up there, the old parking lot for the hospital, we were going to make a park out of that. That probably would be an ideal situation for something like this, and put the park someplace else.
Robbie, then we can, we can decide on a location. I mean, we don't have to decide on a location tonight, but I mean.
There's no, there's no need now to decide on a decision. It was just your community. And if we win, then we'll come back, and then we'll have inputs like this. And then you'll, you'll make a decision both electrically and economically, because we need a three-phase 480 volt, volt connection. We might have a really perfect site, but three-phase 480 volts is a mile away. That's pretty expensive to do. So we have to look at economics and efficiency of getting a three-phase 480, which is pretty standard in the industry.
I mean, I see on the one page, there's ZEF Standard Site Host Agreement pays 7% of the gross annual charger revenue to the host for use of the site also. You guys pay 7% of your gross annual charge revenue?
We pay, we pay the site that we lease, 7%, 7% of the gross revenue. That's our, that's our lease payment. Now, that's going to be pretty thin at first, because electric vehicles are really on the move as far as people having them and buying them. And so, once you have a station, you're going to have some responses, say, oh, I can now recharge pretty quickly if I want to and move around. So wherever we cite it, especially if it's like some of Casey's or QuickTrip or something like that, they see their revenue go up pretty good. So this is your rent, it's, our rent's going to be going up pretty substantially over the next five years. It's pretty thin at first.
Lanell, do you see any, any problems with the, based on what he's telling us, just to have a letter of intent? That get us in trouble?
I did have our city attorney review this information once it was provided, because I wasn't familiar with his process or this program, and he didn't have any concerns. He did, he did question why we would sign a, an exclusive letter of intent, intent. That was his only question, but if, if he's answered your questions to your satisfaction, I don't think there's anything wrong with that.
Any other discussion? And I mean, what's council want to do? I mean, do you want to motion to do that, or?
I know the nice thing of having a, a station here would be, it would help draw more people to come stop and possibly visit our businesses around town while they get charged. Still not sure about the letter of intent, but.
Yeah, I do think since, you know, there's not a ton of these stations around, so once people know it's here, you know, they're probably likely to use it quite a bit, you know, rather than a gas station, you might drive through, use it once, so I think it's, it's not a bad idea.
Yeah. Well, I, I guess I don't see a downside to doing a letter of intent as long as.
It's non-binding according to what it says in there, so I mean.
I guess I'll, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we enter into a, a letter of intent with, with ZEF Energy.
I'll second it.
A motion by Bill, and a second by Ken, to enter, to have staff sign the letter of intent on behalf of the city with ZEF Energy for the charging stations. Is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Thank you very much. We should know something by October, is, is what they're telling us, but I mean, we're dealing with a government entity, and what, what comes out and what, what really happens sometimes changes. But thank you very much. We really appreciate it. We think we're, I'm here because we think there is a good opportunity, but there's no promises. I can't make any promises. They will pretty much tell us where we, where they're going to go. So thank you very much, appreciate it. Thank you for getting me on the list at the last minute. You bet. Thanks though. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that moves us on to item E, discuss the process for the city administrator hiring. Lanell?
Thank you, Mayor. I put this on the agenda because there has been some discussion on the process for hiring the new city administrator, and as staff, and I guess I would just like to get some direction from the city council on how involved you want to be, what you want that process to look like. There's different options. I did put a suggestion in my memo that stated that we have a first-round interview by a selected committee, which would be the personnel committee, myself and one additional person. Then perhaps a second-round interviews would come before the council, once that's narrowed down. And the personnel committee did meet tonight to kind of review this, and they had a recommendation as well. If one of you would like, that's on the personnel committee, if you want to talk about it, you can, otherwise I can bring it up.
Sure. We met, we met earlier this evening, and we are planning on meeting next Thursday, the 16th, to go through all of the resumes, to make the determination on how many we're going to. going to interview in the first round. We're looking at possibly seven to eight applicants for that. That would be done by a panel of the personnel committee, which is myself, John, Bill, Lanell, and we, Scott Arneson, our county administrator, has agreed to help us out with that, so, for the first round of interviews. After that, depending on where we're at with, with the number of persons, if it's more than two, then we'll do a second round. If it's less than two, we will bring those two directly to the council to be interviewed and let the council see which way they feel about those two persons before a decision's Was the suggestion for the process from, from the personnel committee?
As long as we're on the same page, anybody a reaction to Leroy's comments about Dave Maroney?
Did he apply for it?
He did not.
He didn't?
And, you know, Leroy, I have not, I have not a problem with Dave Maroney. We, he's, it's been brought up to him, and he's been asked if he would like to try, or like to pursue it, and he's not come forward with that. Because we're going through this process, we have to continue with the process that we've got in place right now, because we've, you know, we've already advertised, and I think we need to move forward with that process. I mean, and at that time, he also knew that, we told anybody that was part of city staff, if they applied, they would get an interview.
I did, I did not bring that up till I made sure I talked to Dave first. He wouldn't give me an answer if he'd say yes or no. I asked him to please...
Leroy, you need to come forward to the mic, please, for, for that.
I did talk to Dave Maroney and Roger Knutson when I brought it up last time, and Dave would have accepted it if it would have got approved last time. He does have a reservation this time, but he said he wouldn't say no if it got offered to him. He did think about applying, but he's kind of at a stage in his life where he's wondering if he wants to get involved and all that, too. So I have had this conversation with Dave, and I think if Dave turns it down, then it leaves you guys wide open to move on, and you have to do that. But I also think if Dave would take it, and we did not replace the EDA director, we would save that money at least 50%, because Samantha works 50% of the time, and we could take a time period off there with moving Dave up and not hiring an EDA replacement, and this would help us with some of the costs we've had to settle out, some of these employment things that's going on. So I think the whole overall picture, if Dave would accept it, would be a good deal, and if Dave turns you down, then you move on to... And I did talk to Roger before I brought it up last time, because I didn't want to waste your time and say, do this, and then Roger comes back and says, no, we can't legally do that. So I did talk to him about all that. So thank you for discussing it, whichever way it goes, it's the way it works. Thank you.
I guess I would be interested in what Derek and Ken and Morris, what you think of the suggestion from the personnel committee on how to approach it, if that works for you, or...
Yeah, I think that'd probably be best, you know? Rather than have five, six people come in front of all of us, narrow it down to a couple.
Yeah, I think that's probably the best way, narrow it down.
It's got to be narrowed down, and the council has to be interviewing.
The final two, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, that's fine.
And if we don't like them, we can always turn them down.
Yep.
That's true. We always have that option.
You know, so...
Been done before?
Yeah.
So if we've got a consensus, then we will move forward that way. All right, that moves us on to the last item. It's the service line warranty, which was pulled down. Bill?
Yeah, I mean, we've been going on with this for the last few months, trying to get the wording right, and over time, my position has evolved on this. I, I just don't feel the city should be involved with acting, I don't know what you want to call it, acting on behalf of the Service Line Warranties of America. If they want to come into town and send letters out or talk to people, that's fine, but why does the city need to be involved in that?
Also, did, I can't remember, three, four months ago, something like that, didn't somebody show that they didn't really have a good record?
Yeah, and we still haven't gotten any, the vendors that they were possibly thinking of using, so it's like...
Right. I mean, it isn't really all...
Well, that was my issue completely, using local contractors. If they can show me they're going to use local contractors, I probably wouldn't be opposed to it, but going through the experience of myself that I did, I, I'd like to see local contractors. And I don't know, have they, have they come up with any local contractors?
No, I haven't received a list. My understanding is that they've been working with some regionally and trying to get some more locally, but last I heard, they've not completed that yet.
I've been in retail, working with appliance warranties, and you buy these extended warranties, and sometimes they don't work out, and I think it applies to this thing, too. That's why I tabled it last time.
Well, I finally liked the letter that they, they took our suggestions from last time that we discussed this and fixed the letter the way it is. But I, I agree, I'd like to see who they have in our area that they plan to use. I guess I'd feel a little more comfortable knowing...
If you've got a sewer backup like I do, you don't want to wait a couple weeks.
You don't want to, no. Exactly.
Basically, I mean, with this letter, it just says that we're, we're basically advertising for this company, is what this letter says. And I don't think we should be advertising for that company.
I don't think we're in that, that's not our business.
Yeah, that... I mean, when it comes down to the bottom, and it says sincerely, the city of Cannon Falls.
Yeah, that was the question I had, is why, why don't they use their own company name and logo?
Yeah, there's nothing to stop them from...
That's right.
Spreading out their own letters on their own behalf, and...
Well, I, I've been told there is insurance available for this thing, and you can buy it from your agent, and it's very cheap. I think, you know, you could probably pay 20, $30 a year to have this insurance. Well, that's a lot less money than buying their plan, too, so.
Just add it to the homeowners.
Add it to your homeowners' insurance.
Not very many companies do offer that, though.
Yeah, you'd have to check with...
I've talked to my agent, and he said that there are some that do, but quite a few that don't.
Yeah, you'd have to check, check with an insurance agent, I have.
So I guess my, my motion would be to not have the city involved in this process.
Motion by Bill to pull the city from the service line warranty program inclusion.
Yep. I agree. I'll second it.
I have a second. Bob Morris, is there any other discussion?
Well, if you look at the cities they, they do serve, there's not very many around this area. You have to go outstate to find people that they do have this service with.
A little fishy, that's what I'm saying.
I've got a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's. That moves us on to item nine this evening, reports. Greg?
Yeah, our east side project's moving along nicely. They've moved down to the west end of it, working their way back east towards the middle. They probably have well over two-quarters of the main inn on Minnesota Street, and the east end will be starting curb next week from the school, probably towards the park. So it's going to start looking like a street again, finally.
What, what's the situation with the cul-de-sac at the end of Minnesota Street by the school?
We're going to build the cul-de-sac, and the school board agreed to your offer of splitting the cost.
They did agree to half?
Right.
I thought the minutes in the school board said they were three to three tie, and they couldn't decide.
They, nope, they voted to split it. It was, it was a split vote, but they voted to split it.
It was my opinion, if they didn't come up with half the price, we were going to have to put a dead-end street there myself.
People.
Okay.
Great. Thank you.
Mike?
I'll wear the fire department hat first. Our street dance was well-attended again this year. Only a few issues with some parking that Jeff was very patient with and spent a lot of the night on, so thanks for that, Jeff. We did complete interviews here recently, so I'm hoping by the next meeting to have a couple of candidates for you for the two vacancies that we have on the department from earlier this year. So I'll try to get those to you by the next meeting. Went to Osceola, Wisconsin last week and did a, it's kind of a 75% done inspection on our new rescue truck. Didn't find anything that required any monetary change orders or anything like that. We made a few adjustments on stuff from some equipment compartments and things like that, just to make sure it fits everything. And they're expecting, we're priority on the build line right now, so we should see it, I think, before the end of this month, is what we're thinking. So we're kind of gearing up to, to get that, some equipment switched over and things like that. They're net, we're on national night out tonight. I think Jeff's department did a great job organizing that again, so we've got some fire trucks going around with that. They're going to come back with some full bellies, I'm sure, so. So we got going on fire department-wise, public works. We got some alley paving that's going to be coming up. We got some stuff over on the west side of town, Ninth Street, New York, kind of by State and Hoffman. Then we're going to be doing some stuff over on the south side, Second Street Southwest, and First Street, kind of just south of the Catholic Church area. So the next few days, you're going to see some alley paving going on to continue that project that we started about three years ago to try to get all the alleys paved in towns. We've been prioritizing them. So we got those coming up. And then we're going to do some, well, we've got asphalt in town, we're going to do some patching on Cannon and Dakota Street areas, and then we got a low spot we're going to fix on Ridgecrest that has been ongoing issue, too. So we'll have that going on. Yeah, that's all I've got.
Mike? Jeff?
Well, Mike mentioned some, Kyle mentioned some. We wrapped up the fireman's dance. Cannon Cruisers is done, got First Thursday coming up. I encourage everybody that, mostly the kids, to come out for the bike skills and bike parade, but I don't think they're turning down anybody, so all are welcome. There is a bike ride on August 11th. Council approved the signage to advise people along the route for that. I don't expect a lot of disruptions. It's a fundraiser for Cancer Society, I believe, and so the riders are not racing, it's just a ride. So there'd be periods where we get larger groups of them coming through. We're going to have officers at controlled intersections to help move them through, but the disruption for people moving about through town that day will probably be very minimal. Hard to believe we're already approaching mid-August, but the summer events are pretty much winding down, and we're giving it back to school. Start thinking about that already and reminding people, you know, that school will be starting up right after Labor Day, and start watching for kids going to school and that type of stuff. So that's all I have.
Thanks. Lanell?
I just wanted to remind the citizens that the city council candidacy filing period is now open, and it will close on August 14th at 5:00. And we have the positions of mayor and five city council members. So anybody that is interested, please come into City Hall. We have a packet, there's a $2 filing fee, and there's information in there, and I'm always available to answer any questions that anybody may have about that. Also, reminder that next Tuesday is the primary election in the state of Minnesota. The polls will be open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And you will see a new DS, it's called a DS 200. It's electronic voting equipment. It's a ballot you'll slide into a machine, just as you have before, but it will just look a little bit different. Newer model, it's a lot quieter, it's easier to see the wording on the screens, so we look forward to seeing how that will work in the election.
I have nothing.
A couple things. What did we decide on food vendors downtown? We discussed that a month or two ago, people on the street downtown. I had a request, and I think Kyle did, too, from the chamber. The Crumbies Beef from Pine Island wanted to be down just on Monday nights, but did we ever set a policy on that, or?
I believe the council's position was to wait until we had clarity regarding development along Mill Street and the city or EDA property before we launched into reviewing consideration of food truck licensing and that type of stuff, if I remember the discussion.
I mean...
That's what I recall.
Well, we didn't want to do it because we didn't, the restaurant, it affected the restaurants downtown, but, I mean, this guy wants to come in Monday night, I don't think they're even open on Monday night, that's why I just...
The other two points about that are, Mill Street is closed on Mondays, and so we wouldn't be any competition to them. Nick's Diner closes at 3:00, and so there's no competition for him. He also wants to be down on the city parking lot, and so that would take it away from Mill Street.
Any, any use of the city parking lot for that is going to require an ordinance change. So if you want to venture down that, we certainly can look at it, but I highly doubt we would have it done before this stuff for sales this year. And just remember, even though those businesses are closed, we still have other businesses in town that are open.
A month or so ago, I saw somebody down there with ribs or something. I didn't stop in, in the city parking lot.
Yep, and he was spoken to and relocated his activity.
Yeah, I just, I didn't know if he had a license or what.
Yep, nope, he, he did not, and he was informed and decided to move somewhere else to, to offer his rib business.
Well, Leroy had a couple points, that car dealership where the, next to the fire hall there, does he have a license to sell cars there? Or is he an offshoot of the one on the north side?
Completely unconnected as far as business operations, I believe. I don't know on that. That would likely be something Sam would be able to answer, because that would be a zoning...
Well, while they went through up on the north side, this guy's going to sell cars there, he's got to go through the process, too.
You want to have Sam look into that for us?
Yeah, I can't answer.
Lanell? And make sure that, that's all legit, because I mean, one day it was a repair shop, next day there.
Yep, and it may just have been because of how that parcel was befrievously, I don't know.
I know Sam looked into it.
Well, and I mentioned those tanks over at the Progressive Rail. I was told by a worker there, they're holding that chlorine, like they apply it winter on the streets. There's going to be more tanks of it there before they're done, too, so...
Actually, it's actually sand, or the chlorine sand that they use to do dust control.
It's, my understanding is, is they were already storing it on-site, just internally, but the, the storage tanks had reached their capacity, and so they moved into what they're doing now. I don't have a lot of details on it. I don't know if that was routed through any other parts of the city, but I know because of their railroad stuff, they've got some federal components that allow them to do a lot of things that other operations wouldn't be able to do.
I thought there was something in the beacon that said that they fell under the railroad regulations, and city doesn't really have any say on that.
Right.
Right, they got all the preemption rights and everything associated with that.
They did come to the last EDA meeting and explained that that's why they built the berms around it and stuff, so that if there was to be any type of spill, that it would all be contained in that location. So they're trying to be a good neighbor to, to try to do this when they do those types of projects. So we'll do like we always have and keep an eye on them, and we've disagreed with them before, but we'll, as long as they want to be a good neighbor and do it right, and don't put any citizens at harm, there shouldn't be any issues.
That's all I got.
Got something for me? Ken?
I don't have anything.
I just got a couple...
I just got a couple, and I talked to Mike before. I did go to that conference of the League of Minnesota Cities. There was a vendor there that came up to me and said, "How come you guys aren't putting up that playground equipment? It's been here for five years." And it's like, "What are you talking about?" And I'll let Mike talk a little more about it. And then also, there's LED lights that are sitting around that was, yeah, okay. Yeah, yeah, I don't, I, you know.
As far as the LED lights that are down there, my understanding is that when the city entered into the agreement, I believe it was with Sundance, Sundance something, yeah. We were with the understanding that they were going to do the installation of those LED lights, and once they were delivered, they sat there a while, we contacted the vendor, and then they said, "Well, how about if you guys install them?" And we said, "No." We met with them and said, "It was our understanding that you guys were going to do this." And the interim public works director at that time was going to contact another electrician to see if maybe we could get that done, and we were going to work with Sundance some more, so it's kind of stalled out, but that's why they're sitting there. The original vendor didn't really follow through with what they were supposed to do.
They also said, some of them, it was kind of ridiculous to get it, because it was like $7,000, $8,000 bucks, where they're only being used one hour a day, so you would never get your payback, you know, so it didn't really make sense either. But that's done, I mean, right. But yeah, it's just little things. But Mike, go ahead, you know more.
Yeah, I had to, it kind of helped answer some of my questions, too, because there's a pile of them sitting in our entryway down there, and I started digging through the office, and I found all the Sundance paperwork we had with them, and that's what it sounds like is, we were, they were originally going to get installed under this energy grant, and then they put it on us to install, so they did get a bid, and I mean, it was, yeah, at least I think it was over $6,000 to do all the lighting work. So of course, we didn't have that budgeted, so now these lights are just sitting there. So I'll make a call back into that Sundance and see where we're at with that, if they're going to hold up their end of the bargain, and if they're not, then we'll have to decide, I guess, as a council, what we want to do with that, you know, and I'll have to see what we can do with those lights now, if we can use them other parts of the city, other buildings that need them, maybe get better use out of them.
What do we pay for the lights? What do we pay for the lights?
I don't think anything the way it's.
Well, we did, no, we did. If I remember, and it's around $12,000 or $13,000 was the total city project cost. We've only paid half of that. We have not paid them the other half, and we won't pay that until this whole situation has been resolved. When we did meet with them, they said they would be willing to work with us and make it, make it right, so to speak. We still didn't feel comfortable with what they were telling us, so, you know, we're still just kind of in that process, so.
And then the playground, that's what, about $38,000, this stuff there?
So my understanding on that was, we bought a package deal with a bunch of playground equipment for multiple parks, and we knew we were going to be expanding to other parks, so they got this at the same time to get a better deal on it. So it's something I'm going to put on the park board. We've got a park board meeting on the 16th, and we're going to talk about that, and Ken wants to.
We, we've been, started working on it last fall with Tom, trying to get it in. The original plan was to have it, we're supposed to be working with the company that we got them from, and the original plan was to get it assembled in March, and then when Tom left, we were, and Wes was filling in, he was kind of scrambling to get going. It got pushed back till May, and, but with winter going on and on this year, it, that kind of fell apart because they were scrambling to get other city stuff lined up the way it's supposed to be, so.
There's some work to be done. We have to, I have to figure out what, what kind of setup it is. It's supposed to be similar to one of the parks we have, so we've done the concrete work before, but it's going to take some footing work and stuff like that to put it in, so that's what I was going to talk about the park board about, see if they want me to pursue getting some bids on this, and then see if it's going to be, if we're able to do it this fall, or it'll end up being a spring project, but, you know, fall's a good time to do some.
And they said the last one, like some of the poles or something, holes that line up, and I don't know, it was, well, it's been sitting for five years in a pile, so that's all I got.
When I first heard on that, I was kind of upset with that, and I was pushing Tom, "Hey, let's get this thing going." So, yeah, I understand.
And residents have asked me, and you, too, so, you know, and, so that's good.
And, well, Mike, welcome. First week on the job, so. So, yep, first two days, so welcome, and I know good things are going to happen. So at this point, Chair will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Or whatever.